Meeting is being recorded.
Here we go. So, welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for 9:00 AM, Wednesday, May 26, 2021. First item on the agenda is pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, we have citizen input for items not on the agenda. And I do, so let's look through, I got three printed items. I think one is a request to speak. So pardon me, I guess I'm making sure I've seen all these. So one of them refers to the Oregon Health Authority and the governor revising health safety protocols for churches and venues. And then mentioning the current vaccine verification is discriminatory. So this, is there, is there a request to speak on this subject from Zoom? I guess there may be. So let's practice that and see who's going to be online. So there may be some raised hands features. So we're going to let you in one at a time, whoever, and when you come in, it'll go off the line for a moment and then you'll be part of the presentation. Okay, so yeah, Adam Waite is the first one. Adam, thank you for joining us. Mute. So this is public testimony, three-minute clock. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah.
Please proceed.
Okay. So I've been asked to speak this morning about a resolution that I introduced to the Deschutes County Republican Party opposing vaccine passports. We, we oppose, we oppose vaccine passports on a number of moral and legal and ethical grounds, namely, the vaccine passports create a second-class citizenship. It, they are fundamentally discriminatory on what is supposed to be a, excuse me, it's a, the, after World War II, we, the Nuremberg Code was created to, to say never again to medical experimentation on humans without, without consent, informed consent. But what we have today is an experimental vaccine. It is, it is being distributed to people via an emergency use, use authorization because we did not have the time in the middle of the pandemic to go through the full testing and licensing procedure. So this is an experimental vaccine, which means that under the Nuremberg Code, we're supposed to have informed consent. You, we cannot have a proper system of informed consent if there is coercion in, in enforcing this, this vaccine onto people. This creates a second-class citizenship. Additionally, the way that the state has implemented this, this new requirement is, is to force business owners to, to act as the enforcement arm of the state, which puts them in an interminable position between the state, the state's enforcement mechanism and their own customers, on the other hand. And we, we oppose this on, on privacy grounds. We oppose this on, on due process grounds and, and we believe in freedom of movement, you know, the, and the ability to participate in, in society. I believe that's it. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much. So I do have an email from, with an email address, M. Mullin. Was that you possibly?
No.
Okay, just making sure, because that was the one I started to read. Thank you, Adam, very much for providing testimony today.
Thank you.
Next will be Phil Henderson. So he's, there we go. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. I think, can you see me now?
Yes.
Okay. Appreciate the time this morning. I'm here also supporting a resolution by the, the Deschutes County Republican Executive Committee, which is a broader one than the one that Adam described. It really has to do with the entire, it's about four pages. It's a resolution declaring an economic, educational, mental health, and criminal activity crisis due to current COVID state, COVID-related state emergency declaration and related OSHA mandates and guidance. And we bring this forward, this is modeled somewhat off of a resolution that was passed in Baker City, and we thought it was a good idea because it brings to light a lot of the different issues that have come up with COVID that as you've been dealing with, I know, for the past year, and as I was when I was there as well. And I think our main point, I think, was that, you know, it's time that we stop calling this an emergency. This, they, I know, I saw on your agenda today, you have it listed for renewal. This will be that we'll be starting the 15th month of calling COVID emergency. And I think we really need to question whether that's still the case. Initially, the, it was listed as emergency because there was a fear we wouldn't, a fear of the disease itself, and the virus, and what it could do to our population. Then there was the fear that we wouldn't have adequate hospital and supplies, emergency supplies, et cetera. That was 14 months ago. Since then, we've learned a lot, and, and we highlight a lot of this in here that, as to what's kind of gone wrong with it, and you can read this, and we're asking you to adopt this, or this resolution, or something like it. So you send a message to Salem that it's time for this emergency to end. The, the reasons really are, one, any relationship to lack of supply or hospital shortages is really, shouldn't, shouldn't still exist. The hospitals, the medical care have done a phenomenal job in central Oregon, and I think throughout the state probably, but they don't, we don't need to keep worrying about whether they have enough capacity. Even if they're full, that's really on them. They've had the time to add additional capacity or do whatever, but we can't continue just to declare an emergency across our society based on that. The second issue is with the vaccine, the entire situation has changed. I see a couple of you are no longer wearing masks. Why is really anybody wearing masks when 65% of our population has now been vaccinated in Deschutes County? It's been available to anybody that wants to get vaccinated. So why do we have to change our behaviors? Those that, you know, personal responsibility is what built the country, and most of us share, and you can make, people making their own decisions. If you're worried about it, the disease and getting it, you can take the vaccine. If you're not, you know, if you feel that that vaccine's a risk, you can continue doing what you're doing. But the idea that the state continues to mandate it is really the big problem.
So that's
So we're supporting this resolution. We're asking you to take a serious look at this. You know, in our state, we have had very little local impact. As you know, the governor puts out our orders basically
So that's a three-minute testimony.
For state officials, but really isn't asking the legislature or local bodies. And so we're asking you to support this and kind of stop this thing that continues to go on forever. So
Yes, we do have it. Thank you so much for this. Yes. Thank you very much for the public testimony today. Any questions?
Said that perhaps Debbie Lee would be speaking.
Okay. So yeah, is there anybody else with a raised hand feature? So, well, go ahead and bring her in real quick and see if she's available, just, just in case. Took me a while to find the raised hand feature, and, and the different tools are different. So Deborah Lee, you've been, joined into the meeting. You can unmute to clarify if you'd like to speak or not.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That worked out well. And I think we do have an email possibly from her, or, yes, that one of these is, or it was, she'd, she'd her. So as I say, there was one more email from M. Mullin. I communicated back and forth. I don't, I guess I don't know the first and last name of this person. Do you know, Commissioner?
No.
Yeah, okay. So I was communicating with this person, but yeah, it's already, it mentions this, the opinion about discrimination and segregation also, and insanity needs to stop. So I want to thank everybody for that input at this time. Is that it? No other? Okay. So this has been our citizen input at the beginning of the board meeting. At this time, consent agenda. There's item number one.
Yeah, commissioners, we, we are, would like to pull item number one off of the consent agenda and reschedule it as a public hearing likely on the ninth agenda.
So that is in regards to the ARPA dollars and creating a fund. So that's a, a public hearing required to create a fund at this time. So we'll just do that in the near future.
So when's it coming back?
Tentatively June 9.
Is that time sensitive enough for us to?
It should be fine. I mean, it would be set up in order to account for ARPA dollars that come in. We intend to do that separately so we can track them more easily. It, it's my understanding we've already received our first tranche. We can just hold it in another fund and then deposit or transfer it into the new fund once it's set up and active.
Really, the paperwork associated with where do we document those dollars? Okay, so with that, is there support for consent agenda?
So move consent agenda items two, three, and four.
Second.
So for discussion, page three of May 17 minutes, there's just a, other item, bullet point, says Commissioner DeBoeck reported on mobility advisory committee meeting last week. I would just like to put more information there, referring to, it's an ODOT Mobility Advisory Committee regarding the roundabouts on Highway 20 in this, in partnership with the trucking interests, because that explains what the Mobility Advisory Committee is. So I have this, a handwritten note for Sharon. So if there's support for that.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
I'd support those additions.
All right. So call for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. So we do have action items. There's the item number five, but there's one more request that we can discuss, which is a, a request for a resolution by the county. So this is a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. So this was discussed on Monday. This is kind of, hasn't been published on the agenda, but it was discussed in our board meeting to be brought forward, and we ended up with a few versions of this. So there's a little bit of homework to do before we might get to, you know, reading a proclamation like this. I guess, referring to version A and B, if we have that, you know, I'm, now I'm trying to figure out which one. I'd have, I'd rather have a more minimal version, just a few statements in here are possibly, possibly passed, just some of the words I would use on this topic. So that, that would be a version A, yeah, just making sure I'm clear on which one of these are. And I would very specifically, you know, get to a point of support, just referring to understanding, you know, suicide awareness and the availability of crisis teams. So I would, you know, the concept of how I would get to supporting this. So is there any discussion on versions or?
If, if we want to proceed, if a majority of the board wants to proceed with version A, I'll, I would just emphasize that one of the key points that was, was present in earlier versions was that, that this concept or this statement that support for Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And there is another, another item in here, another piece of this, that just talked about how in the last year, we've seen all sorts of troubling increases that, that should be noted. Increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and increased city gun violence. So we can proceed with the, the shorter version, but I, I wanted to
Yeah.
emphasize those two points out of earlier versions.
As I say, yeah, this can be a lightning rod issue, and the terminology is, is, you know, can be engaging. So that's why, yeah, I'm kind of sensitive to it, but I'm glad you were able to make statements along those lines. So those would be the, yeah, the version B statements, the, the whereas's that are not included in version A. So with that, is there, yeah, support for version A and, and
Yes.
To say this is taking the action of acknowledging that we are going to do this at this point in time. So we can just kind of consensus, which you confirmed. Okay. So at this time, this will be a 2021 proclamation declaring the first Friday in June, so this is June 4, 2021, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. So I'm just thinking procedurally, if we want to break up reading the, the whereas's where we've done, and then we'll vote on it in the ends.
I also wanted, I, I wanted to ask to see if our, our sponsors of this proclamation, representatives from the local Moms Demand Action chapter, could introduce the proclamation or, or give us a little bit of background?
Okay. Well, yeah, so let's acknowledge that. So yeah, Moms Demand Action is the group that has brought, so please
This isn't actually on our agenda? Are we just popping it?
It's not published on the agenda, no.
What?
It's not published on the agenda.
Right. Okay, I just
Well, as I say, because it came to us at the end of last week, we talked about it Monday, and then a version of it. That was really the sticky point. How would we come up with a version of it?
So our agenda should have just been updated and revised, I guess.
Well, and, but it wasn't determined we would proceed until now either. That was the catch-22 that I was in as the chair yesterday. You know, is there going to be support for, for proceeding with this?
No, I think it's, it's important that we do wear orange on June 4, and we recognize this. Actually, one of the most impactful articles I read was like March of 2020 that said all the unintended consequences of the pandemic, and they've all pretty much come true. We have more Americans on antidepressants than ever recorded in the history of our country. I mean, we've had gun violence for, you know, for, I guess I should say forever. But, you know, a lot of things have really happened to our society that have not been mentally healthy, and definitely recognizing that you need to keep your guns in a safe spot is really critical.
So yeah, please join us at the microphones. If you want to introduce yourself, let's just take a moment and do this. Not too long, but what an opportunity.
Good morning, commissioners. I am fully vaccinated, so I'm going to pull my mask.
This is that moment in time where we're working on taking our masks off, I know.
It feels a little strange, but I'm going to read a prepared statement that I have here. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Brandy Steelhammer. I am a resident of Bend, and I am here representing Central Oregon Group of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. I'm here with my co-lead, Sarah Douglas. I am a gun violence survivor. Thank you for addressing the difficult topic of gun violence today. We can save lives if we are willing to be bold and bring this topic to light. Central Oregon Moms Demand Action has a mission to decrease gun violence in our local cities, in Deschutes County, in Oregon, and our nation. We do that with evidence, with an evidence-based approach. We educate, advocate, organize, and invite community conversations and actions. We recognize that community leaders can play a significant role in decreasing gun violence. In Deschutes County, firearm suicide is a significant issue, with 56% of decedents using a firearm to end their life. Suicide is gun violence, and it is preventable. National Gun Violence Awareness Day is an annual event that takes place on the first Friday in June and is the beginning of Wear Orange Weekend. Wear Orange is dedicated to honoring the lives of people in the United States affected by gun violence and elevating the voice of those demanding an end to gun violence. We appreciate you passing and signing this proclamation declaring June 4 National Gun Violence Prevention Day in Deschutes County. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Douglas, and I don't really have anything else to add, other than I thank you very much for your time today and for your consideration on this, and I urge you to pass it. Thank you.
So just one bit of clarity for the title. I'd like to propose that it's 2021 proclamation declaring June 4, 2021 to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. So just clarifying specifics. With that, Commissioner Chang, would you like to read the first four whereas's or so?
Yes. So the 2021 proclamation declaring June 4 to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. This proclamation declares June 4 to be Gun Violence Awareness Day in Deschutes County, Oregon. We honor and remember victims and survivors of gun violence and declare that we, as a country, can do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded. And whereas Oregon has, on average, 522 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 11.9 deaths per 100,000 people. And whereas 81% of Oregon gun deaths are suicide, which is preventable. And?
Commissioner Dare?
Oh, sure. Whereas Deschutes County Health Services data shows that guns are the most prevalent mechanism for suicide in our county, with 56% of the decedents ending their life with a gun. And whereas communities across the nation, including Central Oregon, are working to encourage responsible gun ownership and promote secure firearm storage options. And whereas individuals died tragically by firearms, and people across the country will recognize Gun Violence Awareness Day and Wear Orange in tribute to victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas, the idea was inspired by a group of friends who lost a loved one to commemorate the lives of those lost. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And
Whereas, anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 4 to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of victims and survivors. Whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Deschutes County Board of Commissioners declares the first Friday in Ju, how about Friday, June 4, 2021, to be Gun Violence Awareness Day. So calling for the, I guess, first and a second.
Yes, I make the motion to approve the proclamation for June 4.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you and understanding the topic.
Thank you for joining us.
Yeah.
And thank you for your time, our Zoom meeting. Hopefully, we can meet in person.
I'd like to do that.
Next time. Yeah, there you go.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you for coming.
Okay, so to, item number five, consideration of board signature of order further extending the declared state of emergency. So all kinds of interesting topics this morning.
Yes, commissioners, order 2021-017 for your consideration would extend the emergency that was first declared here by the commissioners on March 13, 2020, 30 days. So that would take it through June 26. I will note that the statewide emergency declared by the governor runs at this point through June 28. So this would be basically remaining in alignment with that. As we've indicated before, the primary reason for this is to avoid any gap in time and the issues that could create with FEMA reimbursements. In addition, it does relax some contracting standards and rules. We haven't had need to do that, but it does also provide for that.
So a few comments. You know, this, I do support this because of the business associated with being through this pandemic and the emergency, state of emergency that we've had. We are definitely, I mean, today's the day, not wearing masks in the building if you're fully vaccinated. Us, community and society really struggling with the concepts of what does that mean for businesses to have to ask about masks, advocating for vaccine, you know, participation by anybody and everybody at this point in time, working our, through the, ourselves through the pandemic. So a lot of layers to this at this point in time, but I really do see this as the business of working our way through this emergency state.
I actually listened to a couple of counties that haven't been doing this, and they said they haven't had a problem. And truly, is it still an emergency 15 months later? I mean, truly, isn't July 4 supposed to be an amazing day in Oregon? If you look what's happening in California, et cetera, Washington State, it seems like we just continue on. So, yes, if you look at what they're doing to the north and south of us, it seems rather unfortunate.
While I, I hope that we are seeing the tail end of the fourth wave of COVID in Deschutes County, we still have a, an extremely high number of people in our hospital, in the ICU, and on ventilators. And we've seen that, that, the age bracket for those people comes steadily down over time. So these emergency declarations are, are important for us to be able to respond effectively to COVID, to access resources that are available for COVID response. And I believe that we still need to have a robust COVID, COVID response right now. So that's, that's why I will be supporting this declaration.
So is there a motion?
I move that we approve board signature of order number 2021-017, further extending the declared state of emergency for one month.
You can second it.
Okay, so I'll second it.
I'll, I'll vote for it, but I'm not going to.
Well, so yeah, so I'll second it, not a problem. And, you know, I'm, I'm at a point where, yeah, maybe this is the, the tail end of this, and we're going to be not doing this anymore. And very specifically, there's just the hospitalization numbers are the ones, the, kind of the tangible item that I know of today, and supporting the business associated with it. But this, this could be the last extension, but we'll have that discussion. Let's, next time we bring it around, let's get kind of serious about what, what are the cause and effects? You know, instead of a generic concept of just in case, let's get more focused. But that's for the whole organization.
And I can't point out where the commissioners mean, only the governor can declare a public health emergency in the state. The county can't do that. The county hasn't done that. So public health emergencies are different than floods, fires, things of that nature. And so the state declared the public health emergency. This has just been tracking along, quite simply, for contracting procurement issues and primarily for FEMA issues. And to answer your question, Commissioner Dare, in 1996, I was still dealing with flood issues with FEMA in 1998, two years later. And one of the issues we had was we had a gap in time where there wasn't a local declared emergency, and somebody with a real sharp pencil back in DC held us up for probably about six months over getting reimbursement because of that piece of paper gap, not because of anything on the ground. And so maybe I'm a little extra sensitive to that, but that's the motivation for this. I, I'd really hate to have Tom, or well, not Tom, I guess Nick or Greg a year from now, you know, screaming at me because I allowed this thing to lapse for a two-week window or something, and some guy with a pencil in DC is saying, you don't get your money because this window of time, you didn't have your declared emergency. That's, that's the only reason for it. You're not, the governor has the authority, one way or the other, to deal with the public health issue around the virus, and you're simply tracking along in the context of procurement and contracting issues, FEMA reimbursement type issues. So if that eases some of the consternation or concern at all, just sharing that for you.
Well, and, I mean, that does fit into the concept of, you know, are we in an emergency mode, and referring to 30 days from now or not, you know? So that, that's the conversation that we can have, because if we've had this emergency order in place for this period of time, that's time in the past that we've done these actions, we've expended some resources. You know, the mass vaccination clinic is winding down right now. So there is a conversation there about are we in an emergency mode after?
I believe there was one procurement early on that Sergeant Garibay did that, that was outside of our traditional procurement rules. It, it likely would have sufficed as an independent emergency action anyway, under our contracting code. But other than that, I'm not sure that this, this order dating back to March 13 of 2020 has been utilized in any other way, other than to be able to show FEMA that we've had this continuous window of time. And so anything we're seeking reimbursements for would have been during that window of that declared local emergency. And again, maybe FEMA 25 years later is a softer, kinder, gentler FEMA, and we might not have that type of issue, and this may all be for naught, but
But I'm referring to, I mean, future expenses. You know, are we, are we at the tail end of truly doing these contracting events as, you know, as a Deschutes County organization? Are we procuring or contracting for emergency activities today or tomorrow? You know, that's what I'm referring to.
Well, actually, Health is, I, I know they're involved with contracting with some providers for pop-up clinics and things of that nature for securing vaccine and, and providing sites potentially and, and some volunteers. So I could speak to that as far as the emergency management, kind of boots on the ground. I haven't talked to Sergeant Garibey in a while. I don't know exactly what they're doing or not doing anymore. I suspect when they shut down the vaccination clinic on Friday out at the fairgrounds, that'll be a pretty substantial reduction for them at that point in terms of logistics and people, but, but I haven't heard from him.
So as I say, same conclusion that next time around, let's just get a little bit more clear about, you know, what, what are the current actions that we are taking, not that we have taken, but we are taking in a proposed future extension of this. That'd be a great conversation to have. So it's been moved and seconded. I think, yeah, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Good discussion, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I remember that you said that, and I, you know, don't, definitely don't want to create a mess. I just feel like, you know, to continue to call this an emergency and then to hear that hydroxychloroquine is not allowed in this state, and that's one of the drugs that they've used elsewhere in the country seems really inappropriate. Therapeutics don't want people to end up in the hospital, and I keep hearing from people that they just don't know what to do. Like, you need to have a primary doctor and you need to call them if you have COVID and you have, your symptoms are getting just a teeny bit more than they were because definitely if you treat them properly, you don't want to end up in the hospital. So I just, yeah, but we're at, we were at 40 yesterday. I haven't seen the number today yet.
I do think we are dealing with a kinder, gentler FEMA. I, I think Greg's even indicated in some instances, we're getting money ahead of time from them and not a year and a half later. So hopefully that's the case, but, and, and all of this was for naught, but that's the primary motivation as it's been honestly since last March when we did this was to
Yeah.
make sure we didn't get behind the eight ball and trying to get reimbursed.
Well, as I say, right now, I think we're going to have our Sheriff's Office Emergency Manager Nathan Garibey on for another topic, but I'm sure he's heard what we're discussing also. So next time around, we'll get a little bit more deep on what this is. So let's step to item number six, consideration declaring a drought in Deschutes County from one emergency to another. Nathan, thank you, thanks for joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having me. Last week, the board received a letter from the Deschutes Basin Board of Control requesting a county declaration of drought and a subsequent request of the Governor to declare Deschutes County drought emergency. Pursuant to that, there's a prepared resolution from the board declaring a countywide state of emergency, requesting state declaration drought emergency within all of Deschutes County. And, you know, we've, we've talked to the local water masters office at Oregon Water Resources, and it sounds like there's some general support based on the current and expected water conditions for this year. And so you have that, that draft resolution in front of you and be willing to answer any questions if you have any.
So I know this was notified, notified to us by the Deschutes Basin Board of Control, so that's all the districts working together. And I'm sure, you know, they don't take it lightly, but these are the facts on the ground, so.
And then we did get a letter yesterday, last night, from Jefferson County. Jefferson County Commissioners sent us a letter regarding the farmers in Jefferson that sell their agricultural products in the semis.
For a profit.
Yeah, for a profit, are experiencing severe water shortages. We just heard from C Y D that a third of their users flood irrigate. Now, maybe they have small, small parcels, but they flood irrigate, which of course is not as efficient use of water. And Jefferson is really hoping that we can ask for flexibility with our water allocation this year. I know last year, a lot of people in C Y D actually passed their water on to Jefferson County in the recognition that farmers do feed the world. And apparently, and these farmers clearly do with some of the things that they're raising. You know, they have some amazing products. So all irrigators in the Deschutes Basin are encouraged to share water under voluntary agreements and taking special steps to get through this emergency. Yeah, I mean, we've seen what's happened to Klamath Falls, their water's been shut off. And Jefferson County would so appreciate, the Commissioners would so appreciate if we could find farmers that would be willing to share this year. So they were hoping we could add a supportive statement to the, to the, to the Governor to start this critical process.
And, and very importantly, this, this drought declaration will create the flexibility in Oregon's water law and water rights system so that those willing sharers can actually transfer their water to someone who is in desperate need of it this season. So all the, you know, that, that, that adds to the urgency of, of doing this drought declaration. I, I guess, you know, kind of to pull it up to the 90,000-foot level, I, I'd also just like to say that climate change is wreaking havoc on our snowpack and on our water supplies. So we need to increase the efficiency of our water use so that there's more to go around for everyone. And this drought declaration, you know, creates, helps us to create that flexibility to, to move that water around. And I'd encourage, you know, in the longer term, I'd encourage the irrigation districts to keep up the great work that they're doing to modernize irrigation infrastructure in the region so that, again, that we can do more with, with limited supplies of water for other farmers, for the river, and for our thirsty cities and communities.
So I would propose, is there a possible another whereas? We would in, support water rights sharing efforts or, you know, some simple statement in there? Because that's, that is the request.
I think that's what we, that's the bottom line. I know that Klamath, their agricultural base was 300 million. Jefferson County is saying theirs is 250 million. So it's.
I mean, it's just a whereas.
Yes.
But it'll be a statement by the board acknowledging that request from Jefferson County. Because I figured out years ago, the most valuable thing we can do with agricultural water in Deschutes County is get it to North Unit Irrigation.
Exactly.
Growing for profit.
Yeah, so maybe the, the additional whereas could be about flexibility, you know?
Yeah, whatever terminology.
Flexibility to.
Pursue water rights sharing agreement.
Yeah, this is like, all irrigators in the Deschutes Basin are encouraged to share water under voluntary agreements, taking special steps to facilitate something. I don't know. Do you have that letter?
No, I don't, not written here.
I don't think I saw, I don't think I got that letter.
You know what? It was, it was to all of us. I just, I received a text last night from Commissioner Similak. And he was really hopeful that we could make a difference. And I know I said it like a year or two ago, like, the water needs to go to North Unit. Those people, yes, one of my friends sells the garlic cloves by the semis. Because I tried to pay her, and she's like, oh, for pizza, Patty. I sold semi, loads of it. And I'm like, okay.
Dave, can you help us with a, just a simple whereas statement?
Yeah, I mean, Tom just forwarded me the email from Jefferson County. We can grab something from that and figure out where to plug it in. I don't know if Sergeant Garibey has that email or has that letter.
Flexibility, flexibility, sharing, voluntary, those are, those are three, three of the keywords.
So, and that, yeah, being in the resolution, that just shows support for that concept. So, yeah, with a future added whereas clause, is there a motion to support this resolution?
I move we support the resolution as amended with us flexibility sharing for Jefferson County North Unit.
I second.
Okay, so there's been a motion and second for Resolution 2021-036, a resolution declaring a countywide state of emergency and requesting state declaration of drought emergency within all of Deschutes County. Is there any other discussion?
Thank goodness we can do this, guys. I mean, this is so important. It's, this is food.
Yeah, we just had the spring rains, obviously, the last couple of days, and it was nice to see it. This is going to be the big green up, so then that was mentioned.
They will have more weeds to pull.
Yeah, well, exactly. The, everything, the soil temperatures warm and the water was here.
Yeah, I mean, the, the other, you know, one of the other real values of, of this, this wetting that we've gotten is all of those acres that are fallowed in Jefferson County won't dry up and blow away in a massive Dust Bowl type incident, at least for a few weeks longer now.
You know, it was pouring in Bend yesterday, and I got home to Sisters, and it was sunny. It was, it was pouring here. My raincoat still had water on it.
Rain clouds, yeah, we're definitely spotted yesterday.
It was amazing. Thank goodness. I mean, whatever, at least half the county was getting rain.
Okay, so calling for the vote, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll see the proposed words, and it's an approved document. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I'll work with County Council on a revised version and get it to you.
Thank you.
Can I ask what the process is to, after we make that declaration, to communicate that to the Governor? How, how does, how do the mechanics of that work?
So it, it goes to the Governor. However, the Oregon, I think it's the Oregon Drought Council meets, and then they review and make recommendations. And I believe that our local Oregon Water Master's Office, the local district here has already been having conversations regarding the, the situation we have here in central Oregon. So I, I don't know exactly the timeline, but it, it should proceed through that process over the next month or less, hopefully.
Okay, so we hand off from us to the Water Master, to the Drought Council, to the Governor?
I believe that's exactly, that's how it works, yep.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nathan.
Okay, so we are at 15 minutes before a 10 o'clock time certain COVID-19 update. We have a moment for a few other items. So when we were providing updates on Monday, I, two other meetings I had attended. So there was a Bend Airport stakeholder meeting, so I was just able to kind of follow it and listen. So the Bend Airport's talking, working on a master plan. It's in the rural county, so we're going to be the, at the cross section of the, some decisions there. But it was just for information following the Bend Airport discussion. So, but one of the things that comes to mind is remember Butler Market Road and Powell Butte Highway is a proposed project, capital project for a roundabout. And if you look at a map, that, that's, it terminates right at the airport, Bend Airport. So when we talk about that roundabout, it isn't just Powell Butte Highway and safety at that intersection, it's really the entrance to the airport, too. So it's just a, a moment in time thinking about what, what that proposed project is because that's one of the ones that was mentioned by our road department to be put in the list with state legislative possible, you know, project funding, just to get it up on our CIP list a little bit. So as I say, it's a roundabout, but it's really the entrance to the airport also. So that's Butler Market Road and Powell Butte Highway.
Can I ask, in, in these discussions, is there any talk about an air traffic control tower at the Bend Airport?
Yeah, there's talk about it, you know, and it's very much FAA decisions. I'm not going to be an expert in that, but yeah, there's discussions about, you know, I'm sure the, the flying community wants it, and then other folks that are around it say, well, slow down, we don't want it to grow that much. So that's the, definitely the discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we just, I, I know that we have possibly the most congested airspace in, in like the Pacific Northwest. And so the fact that we have all these planes flying around with, with minimal, with minimal coordination, it's, it's a, I mean, to, to me, it sounds like a real safety risk, so.
Actually, someone brought that up to me a couple of months ago, and I said, why don't you get ahold of the city and see if you can get funding for it through your ARP money? So I said, I know they need funding for it, and, yeah, it sounds like a tower is definitely needed out there.
But I think really the, the topic was kind of the buffer lands around it. Even if we're not, you know, we, referring to the city of Bend and the airport, if there's not going to be specific growth, you know, what, how could you hold a buffer? And I think it's to the east, and then a future runway extension, making sure there's buffer lands on both sides. Also Powell Butte Highway, how it kind of does an S-turn at the end of the airport, you know, would, is there, is the vision to move it farther north or not? You know, so that's really the discussion that was being, so when we see it as a Board of Commissioners, as a comprehensive plan or update or whatever, it'll just, it'll kind of be the buffer lands is the topic more than the discussion about.
The roads and the surrounding lands.
Yeah, yeah. And then also the Redmond Airport Committee. So it just happened to go to two airport committees last Thursday. The other one is Redmond Advisory Committee as a Commissioner, joining city councilors, deviation interest in Redmond. And that was, you know, kind of just for information. It's something I attend regularly, it was a Zoom meeting. But also the topic of ridership, you know, what is ridership going to look like? They think they're going to have a very busy summer, but the big variable out there for a commercial airport right now is, is there going to be business travel? You know, what's business travel look like in the next year? So that's the variable, you know, because there's a summertime tourism traffic plus business traffic, and then in the fall and the winter, there's a mix of business and tourism traffic also. So business traffic is the big variable right now, if it's going to come back like it used to or not.
Oh, no, it's already worse.
Yeah, so that was the.
It affected this weekend. And did you hear that a flight attendant just got a couple of teeth knocked out by a passenger? The lack of civility. People gotta like start remembering their manners when, because it sounded terrible, the things that are happening. Yes, the lack of civility. And apparently, another riot was declared in Portland yesterday. So it's, it's really, it's unfortunate.
When I was just referring to business travel.
I know, I know. And there was, no, I'm watching Good Morning America this morning at.
Yeah, national news, yeah.
Yeah, and, and they're talking about, oh, yeah, they're talking about how bad it is and the, and if you haven't been flying, everybody's flying now, and it's going to be more crowded and, because people are really, have all this pent-up demand, you know, they want to go somewhere.
Yeah, well, as I say, they, they think you're going to have a, quite a bit of activity, but is there going to be that long-term sustained business travel? And I know it, you know, people used to fly in and out to San Francisco or, you know, LA or whatever for their careers. Every weekend, Mondays and Fridays, people would be flying back and forth. That may all change. Okay, is there anything else? Just other items?
Oh, I did note that we did have another fire in a homeless camp that they're investigating in Bend, so it does seem to be, it's that time of year, and we have really, you know, we've got to get on top of things. I had a, a local resident who is like a supreme person who loves the part of, you know, our forests, et cetera, and sent me pictures of all these vans parked, like, under signs that say, no parking, no camping. And these, there was a Mercedes van. These were like fancy-looking vehicles with license plates all over the country.
So that's the, yeah, the boondockers, people just kind of.
Yes.
Moseying around, fully self-contained, looking for a place to park each night.
Yeah.
In life.
Yeah.
Yeah, those, those are the people who I wish we could channel into paid park, paid campgrounds.
Yes.
So that, well, and if there are.
So that they would be at least contributing a little bit to the local economy and, you know, not leaving whatever kind of waste they're leaving out in the woods.
But I'm sure there's really good players there, too. But yeah, there's a whole spectrum.
Yeah.
You said the waste in, on the trails now is disgusting and deplorable. It's, it's really unbelievable, so.
So the, the one other thing I'd mention is, yesterday Senator Jeff Merkley did his Deschutes County Town Hall virtually and had a chance to, to chat with him a little bit prior to the Town Hall. And, and some of the themes that came up were COVID, the use of the American Rescue Plan dollars. Housing came, came up as a, as a big issue, infrastructure. Our school districts talked about, you know, talked about how hard it is for them to attract employees because, and how hard it is for their employees to find a place to live because of the extremely high housing costs right now. So just a little bit of, a little bit of what was covered there. The Town Hall itself mostly dealt with national issues and what, it wasn't really very local in, in nature that the questions, but there was a, there was some good discussion of kind of local, the, the local situation during the, the pre-meeting.
One of the concepts, so I was in attendance also at the. One of the concepts, so I was in attendance also at the elected Commissioner, invitation to.
Local leaders.
For the meeting. Yeah, there you go. After, I didn't have an opportunity, but I thought, I wonder what it looks like from the Senator's point of view about construction supplies, you know, lumber and, and the industries, you know, because that's, he may be able to have a view about, you know, what's going on and why. Because it's just this run-up in the cost of construction materials. And, you know, the fires, forest burn, the fires, you know, affecting the forests and the forest materials available. I wonder what the, what he looks like from his point of view.
I mean, it's.
I'll ask him, the staff.
I, I, I was, I was over in the Mackenzie River Canyon last weekend, and the number of log decks, the salvaged log decks, it was, it was pretty astounding. I mean.
Yeah. So supply and demand, hopefully there's something in there. That's.
Yeah. I mean, well, you know, I, I mean, at this point, it, I can only imagine that it's a matter of mill, mill capacity. You know, you can, you, you have a mill, you can only run it three shifts. And if you're, you know, if you're being force-fed, you know, if you have a glut of, a glut of logs that are going to, you know, only be good for, for milling for, you know, six months or, you know, another few months, it, it's, it must be a really terrible, it's, it must be a very terrible feeling right now.
Oh, but hopefully if we have a glut of logs and full three shifts, you know, the next time I need to go buy a two-by-four, I don't want to spend 20 bucks on it. That's all I'm saying.
Right. Just, but, you know, like for the, for the mills that aren't running three shifts regularly, you know, to ramp up to do that, there's a lot of cost. So it's, and yeah, and they've.
But there's a lot of demand, too. So that's the other side.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, with, with all that demand, it's a, it's a seller's market in some ways.
Oh, and I do want to mention today, this afternoon at 3:00, is Chief Kelly's retirement party at Blackbeute Ranch at the lodge, acknowledging and recognizing his service to the community. So if you are so inclined, I think it's supposed to be a really beautiful day out there, you might want to drive out to Blackbeute.
Okay. So at this time, we will transition to our COVID-19 public health update. It's a little bit early, so no pressure if we're not quite ready, but that'll be our next item. Dr. Conway's going to be joining us today, and Molly Wells-Darling and Emily Freeland.
As we move into this, you know, if we are a little early, I will take a moment to mention that I am going maskless today, and I'm, I'm self-verifying right here. So I, I made a copy of my vaccination card. I'm putting it right up here next to my name tag. And I'm also leaving my mask up there, because I can, I can verify that I've been vaccinated. And so I'm going to take full advantage of the, the benefits of that.
Thanks, Commissioner Chang. So George Conway, Health Services Director. Molly, you want to introduce yourself, and then Emily?
Molly Wells-Darling, Incident Commander.
Emily Freeland, COVID-19 Operations Section Chief.
With your permission, I'll share some slides.
So we should call her Chief Freeland? Is that what it is? Chief? Uh, just, yeah.
So can you see slides?
Yes.
And do you know, are, are we streaming at this juncture?
Yes. I do know we are.
Great. Great. Then we'll plow ahead. So this is our weekly, I think soon to be bi-weekly COVID-19 Public Health Update. So we're certainly promoting vaccination as we have been the last few months. There's now much broader availability of vaccinations, and Molly Wells-Darling will go into some detail about this. But basically, many pharmacies, many primary care clinics, and then there's quite a few, I'd say innovative pop-up clinics as well. So we've had some relatively good news. In the last week, the number of cases have fallen fairly substantially, but we're actually still, we would still be in the high-risk category back when those numbers were applied and sort of headed toward, I'm sorry, we'd still be in the extreme-risk category and headed toward the high-risk if we persist for a second week at this level. So it's still a very substantial caseload. But it is progress, and we hope that we continue to see that. I think our biggest concern is Memorial Day weekend coming up, and I hope that everybody just keeps everything outside, and that that will help, that will help avoid a tranche of new cases. If we did see new cases as a result of Memorial Day weekend, it would probably be two weeks since that we would, that we would start detecting that. Because cases do remain high, we're asking, and we, it still implicates not wearing a mask, especially those that are not vaccinated, social gatherings, particularly indoors, after-school activities, carpooling, especially if the windows are closed. So wearing a mask, socializing outdoors, and keeping some distance, and then, and then still, and a recommendation in vaccination as soon as possible if you're eligible, and then testing if you are ill. And I'll talk a little more about that in a moment. So if you're fully vaccinated and you're exposed to someone who has COVID, you do not have to quarantine. So having been vaccinated will help you to avoid quarantine. We have quite a few outbreaks going on now, including in some very large businesses. So this is a, this is a concern if you wish to not have to be out of work. If you're not fully vaccinated and you're exposed to someone, we're back to having to quarantine for 14 days because of the high case rates. There's free COVID-19 testing in June, Redmond on Tuesdays, and Bend on Thursdays. And you can consult our website for the locale and the hours. We're still making progress in vaccination with very robust numbers above, not just above 65, but above 60, and accumulating numbers in, from 16 up to 59. And then remarkably, just very, just two, three weeks into the eligibility for 12- to 15-year-olds, almost 20% of them are vaccinated. So we are, we are making progress, and we encourage everyone to join, join folks here. And the, the dark blue is in progress, and the light blue is fully vaccinated. You see, we're really at a point of effective protection for people over, over 60 at this juncture, and headed there for people, especially in their 50s and 40s. So this is the, this is a little bit different than the version that I last saw, which was, had different colors. But it's the same display. This is persons under 12. Oh, I see. We've added a different breakpoint because of vaccination. But these are persons under 12, 12 to 15, 16 to 19, and then 20s, 30s, 40s, et cetera, up to 80-plus. So this is, the dark blue is four weeks ago, up to the last week, up to the lightest blue is the last week. And you see that in the last, the concentration of decrementing cases has most been in young adults. And we hope that's because of less new cases rather than a reluctance to be tested. And with a parallel decrease in the 30 to 39, so also young adults, and 40 to 49, and less, less decrement in the older, older folks, and a little less decrement in, in teens so far. This is our weekly test results. We have, the number of tests being done has declined fairly substantially, down by almost 2,000 over the last month. But on the upside, the rate of positivity is, it's, I don't see it written out here, but it looks like it's about 7.6%. So if you're around someone who tests positive, please get your test six to nine days later. And these tests are, are very readily available, generally without cost. This is something we've talked about before, but I'm going to put a slightly different spin on it. It's still allergy season. And it's easy to confuse, especially severe allergy symptoms with COVID-19. But the things that distinguish it is allergies tend to cause primarily upper respiratory symptoms such as cough, headache, and then also fatigue. It may give you sore throat, sneezing, of course, itchy, watery eyes, funny stuff, nose. The things that cause concern, and it may mean that you actually have COVID, possibly in addition to allergies, is if you have typical flu-like symptoms, which is fever, chills, body aches, or loss of taste or smell. And then we particularly want to, I particularly want to draw attention to shortness of breath. So shortness of breath not only may mean that you're at risk for COVID, but it may mean that if you have COVID, that your symptoms are progressing such that you really should seek, anytime you have shortness of breath. So this is where you're gasping for air after sort of minor exercise, that you're not accustomed to, to feeling that way. Or more concerning, if you're sitting still, if you're really having the struggle to breathe at all, you really should seek immediate medical care. Our hospitalizations are quite high. St. Charles system is full currently. Hospital ICU is quite full, and the great, the very high caseload of COVID-19. We did, we were in a meeting with the hospital CEO yesterday afternoon, the meeting with Senator Merkley, Commissioner Chang mentioned. And he did say that they are deferring elective surgeries. So it's severe enough, they feel that they have to curtail a lot of the routine, which can be potentially lifesaving, such as cancer surgery, in order to keep enough space and, and try to maintain some elasticity for hospitalization. So this is, this is very concerning. And then it's worth pointing out that 97% of the current COVID-19 patients that are hospitalized have not been fully vaccinated. So just one thing, and then I'll pass it on to Molly Wells-Darling. So.
Dr. Conway? Do you have the number of Deschutes County residents in the hospitalization?
I didn't look this morning. It was in the, it's been in the 20s. Does anybody know this morning? I didn't see the EpiContrato report this morning. Maybe somebody.
Good morning. 20, hi, good morning Commissioners. 24 Deschutes County residents in the hospital out of 42 admissions. And ever hospitalized is 561.
Thanks, Nad. So the new mask guidance is if you're fully vaccinated, you can go without a mask, don't need to physically distance. Businesses are checking vaccination status. Now that's a, there's, there's a subtlety there. This is the issue of businesses checking vaccination status. And we're actively, and actually I met with the, the health officers in the state yesterday in their monthly meeting, and we're actively exploring whether it may be possible for businesses to place a placard where people are basically implicitly asserting their attestation that they're vaccinated and thus not wearing a mask, rather than, than businesses needing to worry about this or remain with everyone masked. But the policy at this point does stand the way that it's been articulated by the Governor's Office recently. And then people that are not fully vaccinated will still need to wear a mask and physically distance in businesses. And that's, once again, the subtlety of those that are checking vaccination status, those that are not, as a matter of policy, are expected to be asking everyone or, or expecting that everyone wear a mask. And basically, still needing to wear a mask and need to be physically distanced in businesses, they're continuing to require a mask. And we, once again, I will reiterate, we have seen a number of fairly substantial business-based outbreaks that we're currently working up. So, so this is not a, just a theoretical concern. And I'll pass it along to you, Molly.
Uh, Dr. Conway, can you, without, without being too specific about which business, you know, naming businesses, can, can you talk about categories of businesses where we're, or types of businesses where we're seeing outbreaks right now?
I don't have that distribution in front of me. Others? Emily, do you, do you have any idea offhand?
So, I mean, I would just say that it's a lot of times where people are not vaccinated, where they have to maintain close quarters because of the nature of the work, or, you know, what people are doing in those businesses. We'll see spread pretty substantially in those. So when you think of those same things that Dr. Conway mentioned on the slide of like carpooling, or in close quarters, or socializing together, often those same behaviors are affecting businesses because their employees become sick because of all of those same behaviors, just because of the nature of the work. And it really spans a lot of different types of businesses, but the kind of pattern is the same as far as people behavior in those spaces.
So things like retail, including large retail enterprises.
Retail, or I think about like a restaurant kitchen, where people, just because of the way that those kitchens are set up, they're small, there's a lot of people trying to get a lot of food out quickly, they have to maintain, they are very close to one another throughout the duration of their entire shift, which is many hours. So those are the types of places where we often see these kind of patterns. Or, you know, construction where people are carpooling in one vehicle together to the job sites, or those type of things. We'll see that kind of spread.
So I think it's worth saying that we, we all know, we all sense, everyone's tired. Everyone wants this to be over very badly. Unfortunately, it's not over. And we, we have very substantial case numbers here. And so that not only this, this slide that you see up about the mask guidance for people that are coming as customers, but this same logic should apply in all workplaces. That basically people that are not demonstrably vaccinated, everyone should be wearing masks. And if the player's reluctant to ask that question, which is certainly understandable, it's really more of a medical question, then just masking physical distances must be, continue to be the regime until we're out of the woods with this. Should we proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay. Molly?
All right. Thank you, George. So currently, we have 65%. Actually, just checked the website, and our eligible population vaccinated is 65%. And that's not with our federal doses. So we're above that currently. And that eligible population is 16-plus. In terms of our people vaccinated overall, for our overall population, we're at about 53%, with 56% fully vaccinated of our eligible population. Whoops, go back to, one more. One thing I wanted to point out on this slide is the eligible population was serious in progress. That means people that are, they've had one vaccine, but they haven't had their second, is 8.3%. And we are slowly seeing that go down in terms of people getting vaccinated. So just, you know, encouraging people to get out there and continue to get those vaccinations typically. Or last week, that number was over 9%. Now we're at 8.3%. And historically, it's been in about the 15% to 25% arena. Go ahead, George. And just a reminder, you know, in terms of vaccinations, we hear people talking about, well, we can rely on our natural immunity. But you really don't know how that's going to play out for you. So for one, you know, you don't know if you get COVID, if you're risking serious illness or death. You don't know if you're risking having those long-term, long-hauler effects of COVID. And you don't know, in terms of your immunity, how affected that natural immunity might be for you. So you could really get COVID within a few months again. And you also could spread COVID to others. So our, our best action in order to provide safety for ourselves and our loved ones and our community is to get vaccinated. Go ahead, George. So our Governor has put in place some incentives for people to get vaccinated. Uh, so our governor um has um put in place some incentives for people to get vaccinated. Um, if someone has had at least one dose of vaccine, um, by June twenty-seventh, they'll be entered for the prizes you see on the screen here. So uh, one of those prizes is a million dollars for anyone eighteen or older. Um, and then there will be five one hundred dollar, or one hundred dollar, one hundred thousand dollar scholarships um uh for people twelve to seventeen, and then one twelve, ten, one ten thousand dollar um scholarship or one ten thousand dollar winner for each uh Oregon county.
And actually, uh, Molly, I'll, I'll add on, the principal incentive remains that this is a way to protect yourself and your loved ones, and also to gain progressively measures of freedom.
Right. These are all of our different vaccination options, which you can go to our central Oregon COVIDvaccine.com and find. But as you can see, we're continuing to have more and more options to get vaccine. Most of the clinics that have vaccine now will provide uh vaccinations to ages twelve and up, and they will also provide vaccinations to anyone. You don't necessarily have to be a member of or a patient of that clinic. Uh, we also have our local pharmacies and urgent cares, and then our different counties that are doing uh pop-up clinics. So you can go to this website and uh click on any of these links to to find a vaccine. If you want a vaccine, they are out there um for you to have. And then we also have our youth clinics. Um, so uh, we know that uh ages twelve plus now can receive the Pfizer vaccine. Um, if you're twelve to fourteen, you need to have a parent with you to to um get permission for that vaccine. And there's numerous ways to get that vaccine now. So um in addition to the clinics that we just showed on the other screen, uh, we have some different walk-in clinics this week. And George, you can go to that next page. Uh, so the Pine High School from ten to noon is open to anyone twelve plus. So not only students, but family members, et cetera, can walk in and receive vaccine. And that's on May twenty-seventh. And then May thirtieth at the uh St. Thomas Catholic Church in Redmond, from one to seven. And that's open to anyone sixteen plus. And then June first of the Downtown Bend Library, twelve plus, and June third, the Downtown Redmond Library, twelve plus. Um, so you can come in, and it's open to anyone within those um age categories. And then also Summit High School um has a vaccination clinic on Thursday, May twenty-seventh. And finally, um, as you know, we're coming um to a close out of the mass vaccination clinic, so that is this week. Um, so today, from three thirty to six thirty, we are giving our Moderna uh second doses. Anyone can walk in to receive this. We've had a lot of walk-ins over the last couple of weeks, so that's great. So if you're due for your second dose of Moderna, which would be twenty days, twenty-eight days out from your first dose, you can uh walk in out of the fairgrounds today from three thirty to six thirty. And then on Friday, we'll be giving our last second doses of Pfizer from eight thirty to eleven thirty. Um, so if you're twenty-one days out from your last or your first Pfizer dose, you can walk into that clinic and get your, your second dose. And then again, just for uh help with any questions, you can go to our Deschutes website. Um, we have frequently asked questions there. We also have our email assistance. If you email us, we will get back to you um with answers to your questions. And we also continue to have our COVID hotline that's listed there. Um, just one piece of information related to the COVID hotline is that we're no longer open on Sundays. We just were not receiving a whole lot of calls on Sundays at all. So um we continue to be open Monday through Friday and then um on Saturdays.
And um thanks to Commissioner Chang for appearing in our promotional material here. Uh, questions?
So, uh, I, I have a question. So one of our, one of our theories was that um there was a certain population who were willing to to head to the uh mass vaccination clinic to get vaccinated, and that there was another kind of slice of people who would go and get vaccinated if it was much more convenient for them. And and we're, now we're seeing with um with, you know, with the availability at all these clinic sites, with pop-up clinics and and school-based clinics, um, that vaccination, you know, vaccine is be, is becoming much more convenient. Is it, is it working? Uh, is, is the, is that, you know, is that slice of people that we thought would uh come in and get vaccinated? Uh, are they responding to that? And uh, you know, can you give me a sense of kind of, um, I, I, I know that the, the, the volumes of vaccine that we're administering on a weekly basis are, you know, or they're, they're, they're tapering off from the, the peak during, you know, the, the peak of supply availability and interest at the mass vax clinic. But I mean, is, uh, like, what kind of scale are we, are we at right now? And are, are we feeling good about that? Or are we concerned that it's not enough, or?
I, I would definitely have to go back and look at what the number, the difference in the numbers between when we stopped first doses for um at the mass vaccination clinic versus now. But I will say, we are continuing, we are continuing to see, you know, our, our rates of vaccination um increase, um, despite the fact that the Mass Vaccination Center hasn't been giving uh first doses since the very first uh week of May. Um, so I think that's good news. I think we're also continuing to get that information out there to people, how available that vaccine is and and how to go about um getting that. Because we are in, in a um distributive model, um, it, we will see it a little more slowly roll out because people are, you know, getting their appointments at their clinics and and going in and getting that vaccine. Um, I think we'll see things pick up a little bit more when we're able to do our um clinics in the uh downtown locations in the different um communities. So our, our intention is to have one in each community per week. That's what, that's what we're, uh, that's what our goal is. Um, so I think when we have those downtown, for instance, the library, and then that's going to make it easy for employers to say, hey, go ahead and go get your vaccine, you know, I'll cover you while you go get that vaccine. So I think we'll see um some increase in that population. And then we're seeing um increase in our numbers for our Latinx population, especially related to some of the events that we're doing with our outreach workers, um, who are going out into those communities and educating and finding out where there are communities that want that vaccine. And then we're arranging to have um clinics for them, like at the Catholic Church in, in Redmond.
So we are um doing our best to increase the convenience and the availability. And I think we've made real progress in that. And I think that's a, so we're, we're still very focused on maximizing the number of people that are, that are helping protect our community by being vaccinated. Um, but the way that we're doing it now is rather than just the sheer volume of mass vaccination is trying to make it as convenient and accessible as possible uh throughout the county.
Yeah, yeah, I, I guess, um, I thank you for, you know, for all those details on our efforts. I guess, I guess what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand is, you know, um, at, at a certain point, we, we identified vaccine hesitancy as a, as a potential hurdle to us getting to the levels of vaccination that we'd like to be at. And, you know, one of the, one of the potential reasons for uh that hesitancy was convenience. And, and I guess I'm, I'm hoping that uh what we're finding is that if you make vaccine really convenient, that there are, there is a slice of those hesitant people who, who are going to come forward. And uh what I'm hoping that we're not discovering is that the, that slice is smaller than we thought, and people are hesitant for other reasons. Um, and I, you know, I, I, I know that that's probably very hard to tease out. Um, but, you know, I, um, hearing about, hearing about what we're doing to make uh vaccine more available and hearing that there's at least some people responding is, is, it's helpful. Thank you.
Oh, so Sarah Hudson and Nahad, um, Sarah Zodi, our public health director, have been looking at this in great detail. And we are aware that there's some segments that may be quite resistant, but other segments that would be open to being vaccinated. And the size of that has actually diminished over time. Do you want to, want to flesh that out, huh?
Yeah, thanks, George. Thanks, Commissioner, for the question. Um, I think every day that passes and we vaccinate more people nationally and globally, we build um more confidence around the safety and effectiveness of the uh vaccines. So it's really playing to um to our favor in terms of building confidence. Um, you are certainly right in that um the initial demand for the vaccines was certainly uh, you know, outweighed the supply availability. And then as we move through, uh, then we reach a certain segment of the population which really needs to deal with the convenience. And then post-convenience, uh, those who have dealt with the convenience, then they need to deal with perhaps a level of trust they have in the government or in the process of the vaccine development and around their risk perceptions as well. So what, for us to be evidence-based and to make decisions accordingly, we have actually this month in May instituted exit interviews in the mass vax clinic, where we are able to um get information from the people who are walking in to understand what hurdles or barriers they may have faced and overcame in order to uh seek the vaccine. I think in the next couple of weeks, Commissioner, we should have more information around some of these barriers and be able to speak intelligently around some local dynamics.
Great, thank you. It'll be very interesting to hear about that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the COVID-19 public health update today. Uh, so next week is budget week for Deschutes County. We'll be here in this room going page by page through a very thick document. Uh, but we, yes, we won't schedule uh this public health update for next Wednesday, so we'll see you two weeks from now on this topic.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next is a public hearing. We are kind of half, thirty-five minutes early for it. I don't know if we want to.
Yeah, you need to, since it's been noticed, I believe, four eleven AM, we need to, although Peter Russell might be coming on. And he can indicate how the notice.
To eleven at this time. I mean, it's just the way the day is going to break.
Okay.
So, yeah, Peter Russell, we're just going to stand by for eleven o'clock uh time certain here today.
Um, morning, Board. Um, let me look at my file because I believe I noticed it for a nine AM start, just in case.
Oh, okay, well.
You got ahead, so let me.
Ah-huh.
Talk amongst yourselves.
There we go. Well, yeah, so the way our morning might go is if we wait till eleven, we're going to, uh, we could also discuss the fact that we have executive session items that could, could be after lunch, or if we end up with plenty of time this morning, possibly have some discussions this morning. So that'll be some choices for us as a group.
I'll note on that.
Let me look at my file, just a sec.
Sent me an email. Um, the bulletin was curious as to when those would be. So if we're going to do those before the lunch hour, we want to maybe let Whitney know so she could let the bulletin know.
Yeah, so, yeah, we'll make sure we're clear on what we're doing here.
Nine AM is when I noticed the start.
There you go.
Okay, so acknowledging that it was published for a nine AM board meeting, which means there was an agenda item published for that. There was an estimated time on our agenda for eleven o'clock, and we are about thirty-five minutes early from that. Uh, but I have confidence that we could proceed with a public hearing on this matter. So item number eight, public hearing, amending comprehensive plan from agricultural to Redmond urban growth area and expand urban growth boundary on forty acres for Skyline Village Affordable Housing Pilot Project and correcting map error from ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero two to add Redmond Urban Reserve to a former Redmond Rod and Gun Club site. Uh, so that was the full agenda uh item. Uh, we do have hearings procedures for this also. Uh, so at this time, uh, Peter, please take it away for our opening process.
So my, my first question, Board, is can you see, I tried to share my screen. I had it bite me once at the planning commission, so can you see what I've got up on my screen?
Yes.
Oh, good. More relief than you know. Um, this is the time and place set for a hearing on two four seven dash two zero dash zero 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 four four zero dash P A Papa Alpha concerning one, amending the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to change the designation of forty acres of property from agricultural to Redmond Urban Growth Area and adjust the Redmond Urban Growth Boundary to accommodate the future Skyline Village Affordable Housing Project. And two, correct a mapping oversight on ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero two uh for the Redmond U G B and a one hundred and fifty-six, one hundred and fifty-six acre exchange by adding Redmond Urban Reserve Area to the subject property, which is the old Redmond Rod and Gun Club. Okay, the Board of County Commissioners uh will hear oral testimony, receive written testimony, and consider the testimony submitted at this hearing. The hearing is also being recorded. The Board may make a decision on this matter today, continue the public hearing to a date certain, or leave the written record open for a specified period of time. The hearing will be conducted in the following order. Staff will give a report on this issue. We'll then open the hearing to all present and ask people to present testimony at one of the tables or at the podium. Also provide the commission with a copy of written testimony. Or for those of you participating via Zoom, I'll outline the Zoom protocol on a later slide. Questions to and from the chair may be entertained at any time at the chair's discretion. Cross-examination of people testifying will not be allowed. However, if any person wishes to ask a question of another person during that person's testimony, please direct your question to the chair after being recognized. The chair is free to decide whether or not to ask such questions of the person testifying. Prior to the commencement of the hearing, any party may challenge the qualifications of any commissioner for conflict of interest. This challenge must be documented with specific reasons supported by facts. Should any commissioner be challenged, the member may disqualify himself or herself, withdraw from the hearing, or make a statement on the record of their capacity to hear, decide this issue. At this time, do any members of the commission need to set forth any information that may be perceived as a conflict of interest?
Does any commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed.
I have nothing to disclose and I can proceed.
I have nothing to disclose and I can't proceed.
So, yeah, I've just acknowledged that I've been involved with these uh as a commissioner over the years, but nothing uh to disclose. And I do feel like I can proceed. So at this time, I'd like to take this next statement. Does any party wish to challenge any commissioner based on conflicts of interests? Uh, so this would, are there anybody in a public uh Zoom meeting with the hand raise feature possibly? Okay, seeing none, and there's nobody in the room, uh, no challenges are present, and the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief report.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, again, there'll be some redundancy in the following slides, what I just said. But um, because sometimes people are new to the public uh land use process, it always helps to repeat this. So again, I'll provide a brief report. Applicant will present its testimony and evidence, which in this case is staff. Again, uh, interested persons will testify, present evidence. Applicant presents any rebuttal testimony. Staff will be afforded an opportunity to make any closing arguments. I'll also note that we have members of City of Redmond staff on the Zoom call, so they can also provide additional information. For Zoom, um, the participants should either be a panelist or an attendee. Panelists are on video, attendees can view. Uh, at the start of the meeting, all the microphones are muted to prevent audio feedback. Uh, at the start of the hearing, the panelists are just the board themselves and county staff. Attendees will be applicant, general public and media. I will note that City of Redmond staff are also uh panelists, I believe. Uh, board and county staff can be unmuted, and we'll provide the opening statement, which we just did. Um, we don't have a sign-in for remote testimony. Uh, you provide your name and mailing address at the start of your testimony after you've been highlighted, raised to a panelist. Uh, clearly state any procedural objections, if any, to the hearings. Um, there weren't any. So applicant goes first and interested parties. Um, again, this is how the Zoom protocol will work. Uh, if you're an attendee, you'll be elevated to a panelist, then you'll appear on the video, and you'll have your audio. You give your presentation, answer any questions from the commission. And then when you're done, you'll be returned to attendee status, and your audio will be muted to present, prevent feedback. Um, same for public testimony. Um, and the way we're going to order is that the chair will first look for attendees participating in person. Currently, there are none. Then who's here by computer? And then lastly, who's participating by telephone? So if you're on your computer, again, you'll be elevated from attendee status to panelist. You'll be unmuted, you'll provide your testimony, you'll be returned to attendee status and muted. Then the next person is selected. Uh, the process repeats until we've done with everyone who's uh participated by computer. I will note that since the note, this was sent out for this public hearing, um, staff has not received any public comments on this uh topic. Telephone attendees, uh, will just go by your last four digits to preserve your privacy. Um, you're elevated to panelists. Some people just call in to listen, so you can say, no, you don't wish to um speak. You'll go back to attendee status. If yes, then um we'll uh promote you to and and listen to your, uh, excuse me. You'll provide your testimony, then we'll return you to attendee status, and your audio will be muted. Next person is selected with the last four digits, and you go through this until all the telephone folks testified. If there's any rebuttal, um, the applicant, in which case staff, has uh the last chance to talk. That also will include staff comments. Okay, with that, I'll proceed with an overview of Redmond's application. So as everyone is aware, there's an acute affordable housing shortage in central Oregon, and the state recognized that and came up with a pilot project, project to try and allow for affordable housing to be more streamlined, if you will. Um, and they selected from two selected cities, Houseville forty seventy-nine in twenty sixteen, Houseville twenty-three thirty-six. in 2019. Redmond participated in the first round, was not selected, but there weren't any other cities really that had its population, so 2336 allowed Redmond to enter the pool again, and they were selected. Requires, House Bill 2336 requires half of the future housing units to be affordable housing, and that's defined later on. The 40 acres that Redmond chose is exclusive farm use property. Deschutes County is the owner of this property. I'll have a map here in a few slides. And they conditionally granted the land to the City of Redmond for the use of affordable housing. The City of Redmond will then, in their land use process, annex, partition, master plan, and title the property in subsequent phases. So in this map, looking at the map on the left, it's, this is all Deschutes County-owned property, the two yellow squares and the red square, well, yellow rectangles. For the mapping oversight, if you'll see that bottom yellow piece of property, that's the old Redmond Rod and Gun Club, that'll be the one as the second part of this hearing. The small square in red is 40 acres to the left of the yellow. That's the subject property of 40 acres for the future Skyline Village. Deschutes County donated the land to Redmond in December 18 of 2019, that'd be used for affordable housing. Affordable housing is defined as you're making 80% of less in the area median income and not spending more than 30% on your rent or mortgage. The administrative rules that allow this are 660-039 and its various subsections. And again, this is, the idea was to provide an adequate supply of land for affordable housing, encourage density. City of Redmond had earlier planned in some of this area, and their Redmond master plan for the East Side Framework Plan, so it's always been intended to be Redmond housing over there. It protects the land dedicated to affordable housing from conversion to other uses, enhances public understanding of the relationship of land supply to develop an affordable needed housing, and enhances public understanding how cities can increase affordable housing and needed housing. As this is a state-run project, and we all operate under the state land use system, which has 19 planning goals, the state OARs for selected cities said there are certain OARs that, and statewide goals that you do not need provide compliance with, such as goals 3, 4, 6, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, which is agricultural, forest, and I'm forgetting 6 and 8. 9 is economic, 10 is housing, 12 is transportation, 13 is public services. And any of their administrative rules clarifying or interpreting these goals. So in essence, it's to streamline the process. So the, there are goals, it's not a complete get out of jail card. You have to do goal one, which is, you know, citizen involvement. Goal two, which is land use planning. Goal five, which is cultural and resources. Seven is natural hazards, and 11 is possibly one, that's your sewers and services, and you have to provide findings for that. So City of Redmond applied for their application to the county, and with hearings officer, we held a notice public hearing. We noticed all properties within 250 feet of the property. Public's noticed in the paper. We only received two comments. One was from a housing advocacy group that requested goal 19 findings, which the OAR specifically exempt the property from. And then we had a neighboring property owner who was concerned about compatibility with industrial uses, which is what his property was owned for, and the development of residential. City of Redmond, in their response to that, talked about their framework plan, that I've mentioned before, the East Side Framework Plan, the master plan they're going to do for Skyline Village, and the use of buffering spaces and setbacks, so there would be a land use compatibility with this affordable housing to the north and the industrial lands to the south. Deschutes County Code, because it's exclusive farm use, requires the Board be the final decision-maker for land use applications involved agricultural lands, because this is a comp plan designation of agriculture. Okay, so that's the first part of the hearing. The second part is correcting a mapping oversight that we had. This is a land use file 1900648-P-A and 649, zone change, which reconfigured the Redmond UGB to add 156 acres while removing an equivalent amount from the UGB. This was a reaction to an earlier bill for the City of Redmond to help encourage economic development. Initially, they wanted to look at the old Redmond Rod and Gun Club as a place to develop, which is allowed under the bill. Later on, they got looking at the development potential for the Redmond Rod and Gun Club versus parcels more north and west of the Redmond Rod and Gun Club, and so they did a land swap, keeping the same amount of land within their UGB, but removing the Redmond Rod and Gun Club from their city zoning and returning it back to EFU and also agriculture. So this is the site, as I mentioned earlier, this yellow kind of quasi-square that's south of Antler and north of 126. We're going to just put this from, to agriculture and Redmond Urban Reserve. It's essentially correcting a Scrivener's error on the map. We've received no comments on this. So again, this was the Red and Rod and Gun Club, removed from the Redmond UGB designation, went from Redmond Urban Reserve to Redmond Urban Reserve and zoning designation of Redmond Urban Reserve Area, combining zone or inadvertently left off. The hearings officer had approved the overall land swap on December 24th of 2019. The Board also approved in February 26th and adopted the maps and implementing ordinance in 202002, but we left out, as I said, this urban reserve area, so we want to reestablish that. So next steps in the process, the Board's opened the public hearing, obviously. So when you're done with the public testimony, you can continue the hearing to a date certain if you choose. You can close the oral public hearing and keep the written record open. You can close both the oral and written record and set a date for deliberations, or you can close the oral and written record and begin deliberations today. So once you have deliberated, I don't have an ordinance for you today, but what we'll do is come back on another date after your deliberations and have two separate ordinance. 2021-005 will be the Skyline Village, and that's the Affordable Housing Pilot Project. And ordinance 2021-008 will correct the Scrivener's error on the mapping oversight on the old Redmond Rod and Gun Club site. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So a couple slides back, the Rod and Gun Club site, comprehensive plan designations, probably the next slide forwards.
This one?
That one, that's it, yeah. Just getting real clear about what this is. So Redmond Rod and Gun Club site, removed from the UGB. So that's pretty clear. So then, the zoning is EFU now. It's been put to a zone, base zone of EFU, correct?
Correct.
And then, so then we're adding back comprehensive plan designation for Redmond, City of Redmond's comprehensive plan, urban reserve area, and urban reserve combining zone.
You're, you're, you're 80% there. So we're adding the designation onto our own comprehensive plan. This land will be zoned Redmond Urban Reserve Area, and there's also a zoning designation. So it sells, anyone who's looking at the land, look, this is intended, right now it's zoned agriculture, it's got EFU, but its intent is to actually be part of the City of Redmond, and so it's an urban reserve area and zoning designation.
And it's the county's designation because it's outside the city. Yeah, see, I knew I was missing something, half, half of something there. Now, now I'm clear. Okay, I got it.
You're only missing 20%.
Yeah, well, I knew I was close. Okay.
Peter, I was just looking at all the dates, and I was going, oh my gosh, has this not taken so long? I know, what is it, 12,000 households in Redmond are paying too much for their mortgage or their rent, including their utilities. And when you look at the time involved, it's, it's quite unbelievable, isn't it? And then we, because we actually met January 13th of this year, okay, we're almost June 1st, but we couldn't proceed ahead until the Redmond City Council did what they could April 13th. So I just, yeah, I just want the public to be aware that we are trying to stay on top of this as much as we possibly can in order to push this project into providing actual housing that's so needed in the community.
That's true, Commissioner Dare, and I'd also piggyback on your comments that the administrative rules that the state came up with by exempting several statewide planning goals, it's going as fast as it possibly can go to get affordable housing into the area. So I know that to an outsider, it may seem like we're really kind of moving like a turtle, but actually by government standards, we're, we're going like a speedboat.
Really?
I know it doesn't seem that way, but, but.
No, it doesn't feel that way at all.
They've tried to streamline this as much as possible. I do have a question for the Board, and thank you, Commissioner Dare, because you triggered this. When we get to the ordinances, the Board has two options. You can do the traditional ordinance, which takes effect in 90 days, or if it's an emergency, it can take effect, you know, upon signature or 30 days or whatever timeline of your choice. So the one thing I did want to ask the Board, and I'll, I'll do it now since Commissioner Dare triggered that memory, is do you want these ordinances to be, you know, your, your regular ordinance, or do you want them emergency only for either one or both?
I would, I would support doing the Skyline Village ordinance by emergency.
So would I.
Here we go.
Whatever we can do to do our part as quickly as possible for those 12,000 families.
Well, that gives us good guidance stepping into this public hearing process, so the public hearing is open on the matter. For ordinance 2021-005, there would be intention by the Board to do it by emergency, so that was the discussion just now. So do we think of this as opening up one public hearing for anybody to say anything, or should we break into two pieces, I guess is my point, for the two ordinances?
How was it noticed, Peter?
How was it noticed, Peter?
The notice was for a two-part notice. It was for both. The ordinances weren't cited, but the two topics were. So I would say that when the person gives their testimony, they can say which topic or both topics they're speaking to. And that way, the Board doesn't have to, you know, okay, that's everybody for part one. Now for those of you for part two, I'm, just let the, my suggestion, it's up to the Board, of course, just say, have the Speaker identify which of the two topics they're addressing.
Okay, so one is referred to as Redmond Housing, the other one is comp plan for urban reserve. Is that the right terminology?
I, I'd say one is Skyline Village, and, because that'll get you to the affordable housing, calling it by name, and the other one is the old Rod and, Rod and Gun Club. That way, it'll give you a geographic.
The old Rod and Gun Club. Take a left where the, the old tree used to be. Okay, so at this time, this is a public hearing on the matter. I see a few people have joined us. Is there anybody on Zoom requesting to speak on these two matters? Can you use a raise hand function? We do have Deborah McMahon from the City of Redmond already joined us. I don't know if there's a willingness to testify. Are there any raised hands in the Zoom meeting?
Deborah, so she has brief comments.
Great, yeah, so Deborah McMahon, please join us. You are in, in the meeting already, so I think you can just unmute yourself and turn your camera on. Here we go.
Good morning. Commissioners, Deborah McMahon, Planning Manager for the City of Redmond, 411 Southwest 9th Street. And the one thing I wanted to convey is thank you to city and county staff for moving this forward. We certainly appreciate all of the county's support, and we're available to answer any questions. With me today is Josh Hoff, our Associate Planner, who prepared the materials that were the basis for moving this forward through our planning commission. So if there are any questions we can answer, we're happy to do so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So seeing no one in the room and nobody else on Zoom with a raised hand feature to join us, are there any phone numbers? And no phone numbers, okay. So at this time, this has been a great introduction to the topic. Public hearing has been opened, and there's no other request to testify, so we'll close the public hearing on this matter. Ordered at 11:00. And at this time, if we're ready to kind of take it to the next step, any other statements, Peter?
None for me, Chair.
Okay. So the next step is the will of the Board for working towards deliberations on the matter. As I say, the hearing is closed. We have the possibility of leaving a written record open also to a date certain. And looks, yeah, I think we may be landing this one. Any thoughts?
Oh, good. No, I think it would be excellent if we could land it. You know, this came through, what, in 19? This legislation, they weren't in, involved in the initial one in Bend, and I'm really happy that we had 40 acres that is going to work for the, what is it, 485 personal residences in the city, so yes. Whatever we can do to help.
Do we support closing the written record at this?
I do. I support closing the written.
Do, I, Deborah, Deborah, Deborah and Josh left. I was going to ask, is there an appropriate time for us to ask them what, what they foresee as kind of the timeline for the project moving forward? But we can ask the city.
Yeah, next joint meeting or any time they have a status update for.
Yeah. I'm, so I'm supportive of closing the written record.
Okay, so there's support for keeping, closing the written record at this time also. So if we did work towards deliberations today, is that going to put direction towards finalizing the documents?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay. So at this time, I'll call for deliberations on the topic. There's, you know, the two different file number packages, and we're referring to them as Redmond Housing, that the Skyline Village, and then the Rod and Gun Club Comprehensive Plan Amendments.
Yes, as far as the Skyline Village goes, I really was pretty disappointed when I heard how many years it was going to take to actually have this project completed so that people could actually move in. Because when you hear it and you think, oh my gosh, what a great idea, we're doing more affordable housing, that's why I'm hoping that Senate Bill 391 with those little ADUs will be more impactful sooner than, if that goes through in the next week, will be more impactful for our current and trending forward housing shortage in this county. We hear it from everyone. People come here to work and they can't find a place to live, so whatever we can do to help with this project, I appreciate.
Any other thoughts?
I, I mean, I, this is, this is a long process, but I also just want to point out that, you know, having, having watched some of the public meetings about this project during 2020, the county and the city, you know, had to, had to, had to discuss a lot of things to get to a point where the county was ready to proceed with moving the land to, to the city, and that could have gone faster. So I, I mean, if we're concerned about the, how long this is taking, I, I think we, it's important for us to recognize that we could have done things to make it go faster as well. So, but I'm, I'm very supportive of the project, and I would like to do whatever we can to, to, to move it along at this point.
Okay, so, and that's, those are comments towards the Skyline Village, and we do have two parts to this. I'll, I'll just share that, yeah, I'm very comfortable proceeding, Skyline Village, land use associated with that, and also the Rod and Gun Club. I do support the emergency clause at the Redmond Housing Skyline Village portion of this, and, you know, with an immediate approval also. And then the Rod and Gun Club, I think that we can just leave that for 90 days and just let it, let it find its own path.
It's clearly not an emergency.
Yeah.
But this really is, and I'm actually really happy that the county required that half of the units be for those households making 80% or less than the county's area median income, and so 80% of the current median income would be $55,900. So that's, you know, that's definitely going to be reachable less than by, probably quite a few people.
Yep. Okay, so then that puts direction to it at this time. You can bring these back to a Board meeting in the near future, and we could get to vote on the specific ordinances.
Okay, thank you, Board. I appreciate your time and your efforts on this. I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Okay, so that, that was it for agenda items, other than executive sessions planned for today. And as I could see, that, you know, we possibly could have that discussion for a while now, but there was interest in the media joining us. And I'm comfortable for a 1:00 restart just to get on these topics. Looks like that works for Commissioner Chang, by yourself, same?
Sure, you want us to come back at 1:00?
Yeah, so we'll take our lunch recess now, come back for executive sessions only after lunch, so there won't be any other Zoom. I'll come back for executive sessions only after lunch, so there won't be any other Zoom meeting for today.
Okay.
So meeting recessed.
Okay.
Real property negotiations. Kristy Bollinger.
Hello.